Colleagues, good evening. We're going to start with our pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Albright, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I think we are going to have a fairly full evening tonight. We have three items on second call. To remind everyone, we are being both audio and videotaped. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. And online, I have Counselors Gentile and Wright who are participating remotely. So as all of you know, but for the benefit of those in the audience, we're going to start off with first call. We'll go through the items on first call. We will take a vote on first call, and then after that, we will proceed to the three items that have been placed on second call. All right, we're going to start off with the Land Use Committee Chair Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm accurate to say tonight I don't have any items to report, but I would...
A rarity for the Land Use Committee. Go ahead.
Back on track. However, I do have some public hearings I would like to announce.
Would you go ahead, please?
Yes. On page 20, I'd like to notice several public hearings for January 28th. The first is item 4-25, a request to amend a special permit and allow expansion of a freestanding sign at 269-287 Grove Street. And the second public hearing for January 28th is item 5-25, which is a request to alter and extend nonconforming two-family dwelling use at 273-275 Webster Street. And then there is a public hearing on February 4th, which I'm sure everyone will be very excited about, number 725. It's basically the Northland project. And we also have a Class 2 Auto Dealer License 11-25 that night, February 4th.
And it's safe to conclude that February 4th will not be the last we hear of that item.
That will be the first we're going to hear of that item, and we're actually not taking any other petitions on that night, so it will be all Northland on February 4th.
Thank you very much. Obviously, colleagues, if you can, you know, this is a large project, and for those of you who've not been through some large projects before, if you have the ability to attend a land use meeting or two or even more on them, it is often very helpful when the matter comes to full council. So Vice Chair Oliver for the Zoning and Planning Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page 14. Zoning and Planning Committee met on January the 13th. The following item is on second call through 1724, requesting discussion and amendments to Section 5.4.2. Like I mentioned, that's on second call. We have a public hearing to assign for item 369-24 regarding requesting discussion and amendments to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. That public hearing is set for February the 26th. And the other items were held, but we have one, had one appointment of Christopher Pitt to the Planning and Development Board, item number 504, or sorry, 501-24. That item was approved 8-0. And with that, I conclude the report.
Thank you. Before I recognize Chair Crenston, we've been joined by Counselor Baker, who's also participating remotely. Chair Crenston, Programs and Services, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Programs and Services Committee met on January 8th. Report begins on page 15. Item 1-25, this was the request to move Ward 3, Precinct 2 polling location, was approved by the committee unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Next item is on second call. Item 206-24 was held. Item 468-24, the appointment of Armin Freeman to the Youth Commission, was approved unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 469-24, the appointment of E.V. Shi to the Youth Commission, was approved unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 470-24, the appointment of Leila Guston to the Youth Commission, was unanimously approved by a vote of 7 to 0. 472-24, the reappointment of Rhiannon Esposito to the Youth Commission, was approved unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 475-24, the appointment of Naman Dedlani to the Youth Commission, was approved unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 498-24, authorization to appropriate and expend $180,000 for the March 2025 special election. This item was approved as amended in committee to a total amount of $183,395, and that was approved unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. And the last item was on second call. With that, I would move the report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Crenston. Chair Grossman for Public Safety and Transportation.
That was just the perfect amount of time, Chair Crenston. Thank you. The report begins on page 17, and the committee met on January 8th. We had one item, 124-24. We had a great discussion with the chief and assistant chief of the fire department, reviewing their year-over-year data and their last year of operations, and the item was held 6 to 0 with the report.
Thank you. Chair Albright for Public Facilities Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no meeting, and therefore, we have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Gentile for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Report begins on page 17. The first item to report out is 495-24, Honored the Mayor Requesting Authorization to Accept and Expend the Sum of $500,000 in a Reimbursable Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Complete Streets Program. The money will be used to provide sidewalks along the north side of Nahanton Street from Wells Ave to Dedham Street and improve the Wells Ave-Nahanton Street intersection for pedestrians. This item was approved 8 to 0. Next item is 496-24, Honored the Mayor Requesting Authorization to Accept and Expend a Grant of Up to $250,000 from Newton Little League for the Purchase and Installation of Lights at Murphy Field. This was approved 8 to 0. 497-24, Honored the Mayor Requesting Authorization to Expend the Sum of $10,000 for Full and Final Settlement in a Lawsuit Referred to as Webberson-Pinto versus the City of Newton. This was approved 8 to 0. And then 498-24, as Programs and Services did, this item was amended in committee to The item is a request to appropriate and expend the sum of $183,395 from June 30th, 2024, certified free cash to support the March 2025 citywide special election to fill the vacant Ward 7 committee seat. This was approved by a vote of 7 to 0. And at this time, I would like to request a suspension of the rules to accept two late-filled items. Let me read them into the record. The first was 9-25, Honored the Mayor Requesting Authorization to Transfer and Expend the Sum of $393,900 for the Purpose of Funding the Recently Settled 2025 to 2027 Ask Me Collective Bargaining Agreement. And the second item is 10-25, Honored the Mayor Requesting Authorization to Accept and Expend the Sum of $25,600 from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for Technology Updates in the Emergency Operations Center. And again, I am requesting a suspension of the rules to have these two items referred to Finance.
All right. Counselor Gentile has requested suspension of the rules. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The docket items are accepted. Last, Chair Danberg for Real Property Reuse, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Real Property Reuse Committee met on Thursday, January 16th, 2025. We had two items that evening. Item number 205-24, reuse of eight parking spaces that were, that our city owned on Chestnut Street. We took the act, the following actions. We voted to make the initial determination to sell or lease the property. That was 7-0. We voted to waive the JAPG 7-0, and the Real Property Reuse Committee voted to hold a public hearing on the 27th. I will assign that public hearing at the end of this report. We had a second item, number 36-24, reuse of parcel of land on Grove and Hancock Streets. We voted to give the JAPG, which is the Joint Advisory Planning Group, a 90-day extension. That item was, was held, and the previous item was also held after those votes. And that concludes the report. Thank you. Actually, I will assign a public hearing. I would like to assign a public hearing on February 27th. That's a Thursday night, 2025. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair Danberg. That ends first call. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Albright.
Aye.
Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Bixby.
Aye.
Counselor Block.
Aye.
Counselor Danberg.
Aye.
Counselor Downs.
Aye.
Counselor Farrell.
Aye.
Counselor Gentile.
Aye.
Counselor Getz.
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey.
Aye.
Counselor Kalas.
Aye.
Counselor Kelly.
Aye.
Counselor Crenston.
Aye.
Counselor Leary.
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff.
Aye.
Counselor Labovitz.
Aye.
Counselor Lucas.
Aye.
Counselor Malachi.
Aye.
Counselor Mickley.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
President Laredo.
Aye.
Motion carries 23 yays, 0 nays, 1 absent.
All right, we're going to proceed right to second call. The next item is 499-24, the appointment of W. David Power to the Election Commission. I'm recused from this item, so Vice President Kalas will preside over the item.
Thank you, President Laredo. Okay, second call. So Counselor Oliver, oh, I want to go to Committee Chair Crenston, and you can introduce the items.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President, Mr. Vice President. How would you like to be referred to?
Vice President's fine.
Mr. Vice President, okay. The item is item 499-24, the appointment of David Power to the Election Commission. In committee, the recommendation of the Programs and Services Committee was to deny the appointment by a vote of 4 to 2 to 1. Again, this was heard on January 8th. The committee actually, in an unusual step, received public comments related to this. We heard from a number of people, and there were concerns were raised over the individual who had been appointed. Initially, concerns were raised from a legal perspective, contending that the mayor did not have the authority to make an appointment not from a recommended list from the Republican City Committee. I believe that those concerns were assuaged, and towards the end, folks were, the more recent emails and the later comments during the meeting said that the mayor should follow a procedure followed in towns across the Commonwealth to select a nominee from a list of three put forward by the city committee. The conclusion we heard from the legal department was that the mayor was fully within her rights to make an appointment of an individual who had been a registered Republican for at least two years. That is the statutory requirement which this individual has, and it is then up to the city council to approve or deny that recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Crenston. Counselor Oliver, you put this on second call. Do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, so I think putting this on second call was an obvious decision to make. I do believe that this is a topic worth our deliberation as a full council. I put this item on second call additionally because I selfishly perhaps still believe that the original motion made by the esteemed counselor from Ward 1, which is myself, on the Programs and Services, thank you for the laughter, committee, I, my original motion was to hold this item. I put that forward to the committee because I continue to believe that there is a better solution here. My, my hope is that we will deny the appointments this evening within the hope that we can get the Republican Committee in Newton to work with the mayor's office and vice versa, to arrive at a possible fifth name, someone who would be amenable to both the mayor and the Republican Committee. There must be at least one Republican in our fair city that would meet the criteria, that would satisfy both of their criteria for this. I would like to add that I've heard all of the arguments that have been made. We all received a letter today from the mayor talking about the, the legal implications, what it is that she is required to do, what is she, what she is allowed to do. I'm not arguing any of that. I simply would like to see us be able to vote up or down on a candidate that not only the Republican Committee is amenable to, but the mayor is okay putting forward. Ultimately, it is her decision. I'm not debating that. I just want the person that is in front of us as a recommended, recommendation for the appointee not be as objectionable to one of the two parties that, let's face it, by the way, no pun intended, have a stake in this. So thank you very much. Looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Oliver. Counselor Humphrey?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So the chair and I of the committee, I'm the vice chair of Programs and Services, we both voted in favor of the nominee against denial, and I continue to stand by that. You know, this is the, what's before us tonight, my motion right now is to substitute approval for denial so that we're at least having a yes, no, clean vote on the nominee. What's before us tonight is, is the nominee, right? We're not considering other possibilities, whether named or hypothetical possibilities. We're considering the nominee before us. Over and over and over again, many people expressed great admiration for this nominee and felt that the nominee was very qualified, et cetera, but obviously, some people had some objections or concerns because they preferred somebody other than this nominee, which I don't really think is what's before us. But also, at this point, the mayor has made very clear in her communications with us, in her communications privately, that she has no intention of going through some sort of alternative process, which her office is contending has not been the process or precedent in the past. And legally, they are within their rights to do that. I pointed this out in committee that I felt that there was a real concern here, that if we denied this on the basis that we wanted some other process followed, that she can continue to choose to just not do that and send, you know, new names that she had picked unilaterally, and that is within her rights. I also don't think that she has any intention of filling Democratic slots on the Election Commission by asking the Democratic Committee what they think, nor should she, in my personal opinion. I think the Democratic City Committee is in pretty rough shape, it's in the city at the moment, and I would be concerned, actually, if they were the ones making the decisions for who to pick for the Democratic seats. I think the mayor has a right and responsibility to select nominees who, in her opinion and her judgment, she trusts to uphold a free and fair election process, particularly when there are national efforts to get people onto election boards who don't share that objective. We're not confirming a defense attorney here who's supposed to zealously represent a client in the process. We're filling a partisan slot for a nonpartisan commission, and they are required to uphold the greatest public interest on behalf of everyone. And it happens that there is a longtime Republican that she has nominated who has donated to both Democrats and Republicans, which, in my opinion, actually probably a recommendation in favor of confirming this nominee. So as I said, my motion is to substitute approval instead of denial. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Humphrey. So there's a motion in front of us. On the motion, we can take discussion to replace approval for denial. We need a second, though. Okay, Counselor Albright will second. So on the motion, Counselor Crenston?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm going to support the motion. Counselor Humphrey summarized it, I think, very well. I think, sort of made this point in committee, but I'll make it very quickly here, which is that the whole motivation behind the Election Commission being two people, two republic, two people from each of the leading parties is designed so that the commission does not act in a partisan way. It is designed so that the actions of the commission are nonpartisan to simply administer elections, count elections, count election tallies, certify votes. I would hope that we did not get into a situation where folks were overly partisan. I align myself very strongly with the comments of Counselor Humphrey, and I think this candidate before us is eminently qualified. I don't think we heard a word from anyone who said that the candidate was not qualified and would not do a good job. So my suggestion, my recommendation is that we approve this nominee, who, who was the selection of a mayor who has the absolute authority to make that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crenston. Counselor Lipoff?
Thank you. I agree with the last two speakers, and I think it's important to just read just a little bit of what the mayor sent to us. In the Boards of Registars and Election Commission Commission's booklet, sent out by Carol Moore on January 13th, 2024, the booklet repeatedly explicitly clarifies that under state law, a mayor has the authority to make appointments for the Election Commission. Neither the mayor nor the city council should cede their authority or judgment to a city political party. While a few mayors in the city, in the cities chose to ask recommendations, our research indicates that a vast majority do not. The practice of mayors in Newton to not ask for recommendations is to not ask for recommendations. Our research indicates that one mayor, one time, chose a person that one political party recommended. There was misinformation going around saying that this is what the mayor typically does, and she's changing what she does. That's not true. The exception to the rule was one time, when the committee was asked for their advice. But this is absolutely under the purview of the mayor to make this call, and she's chosen somebody that's very worthy, and I support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Lipoff. Counselor Mickley?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, so a lot of considerations at play here in committee I abstained because I need to do more research on the various issues, starting with the tradition, the tradition of past mayors either deferring or not deferring to city committees. And based on my research, there's mixed tradition. There's examples where mayors have done that, and there's examples where mayors haven't done that. The records on this honestly aren't great, so that is a consideration, but the tradition is mixed. Another consideration is an opportunity to involve a constituency that often doesn't get heard enough in the city, the Republican Party, the Republican Committee. You know, of course, this is a city where, you know, many elected officials, including myself, are Democrat, and this would have been a great opportunity to engage that constituency, to make that constituency heard, and that for sure is a consideration. But to me, the biggest consideration is, what is this role? And is this nominee qualified and how qualified? So I met with David Power. We spent an hour together on Friday, and I learned more about his background and his experience, and I learned more about the role. And to me, there's two essential functions of this role. One is administrative and operative, and another is about upholding integrity of elections. David Power's background, currently, he's the president of the Perkins School for Blind, but he has the background as an entrepreneur, as an operator, as a business leader, particularly in go-to-market distribution. Part of the Election Commission is to get people to vote, to make sure it's accessible, it's free, and it's available. His experience speaks to that. Another part of the role is upholding integrity. Some people look to his donation to a Democrat candidate as a sign of him not being Republican enough. To me, again, the role is not about promoting a partisan ideology, it's about promoting fairness. And when someone can move beyond their own party lines to do what they think is right, that actually, to me, signals that he is promoting what he thinks is right beyond party allegiance, which actually is, I think, the kind of candidate we want in this role. And finally, his work with the Perkins School for the Blind, which feeds into some of his donations to Democrats historically. His role is to advocate for the blind, for the disabled. He does that in part by engaging with state leaders, state legislators. These are all things I learned by talking to him. So when we see a donation to a state legislator from how many years ago, and then you hear the story behind it, about how that donation was part of an advocacy effort to get more funding for the people in the school that need help, again, to me, that doesn't erode his candidacy, that strengthens his candidacy. So to me, David Power is not just qualified, sort of qualified, maybe qualified, he's exceptionally qualified, and it would be a huge loss for the city to not move his candidacy forward. That's nothing to say about the other candidates that the Republican Committee put forward. I don't know them all very well. I've had a bunch of conversations with Steve Snyder. They've been great conversations. I have nothing negative to say about any of the candidates, but in looking at the opportunity in front of us with David Power, I think he's uniquely qualified, and for that reason, I will be supporting this nominee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mickley. Counselor Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I will support Counselor Humphrey's motion.
Counsel Mickley?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, so, a lot of considerations at play here. In committee, I abstained because I need to do more research on the various issues, starting with the tradition, the tradition of past mayors either deferring or not deferring to city committees. And based on my research, there's mixed tradition. There's examples where mayors have done that, and there's examples where mayors haven't done that. The records on this honestly aren't great, so that is a consideration, but the tradition is mixed. Another consideration is an opportunity to involve a constituency that often doesn't get heard enough in the city, the Republican Party, the Republican Committee. You know, of course, this is a city where, you know, many elected officials, including myself, are Democrat, and this would have been a great opportunity to engage that constituency, to make that constituency heard, and that for sure is a consideration. But to me, the biggest consideration is, what is this role? And is this nominee qualified and how qualified? So, I met with David Power. We spent an hour together on Friday, and I learned more about his background and his experience, and I learned more about the role. And to me, there's two essential functions of this role. One is administrative and operative, and another is about upholding integrity of elections. David Power's background, currently he's the president of the Perkins School for Blind, but he has the background as an entrepreneur, as an operator, as a business leader, particularly in go-to-market distribution. Part of the Election Commission is to get people to vote, to make sure it's accessible, it's free, and it's available. His experience speaks to that. Another part of the role is upholding integrity. Some people look to his donation to a Democrat candidate as a sign of him not being Republican enough. To me, again, the role is not about promoting a partisan ideology, it's about promoting fairness. And when someone can move beyond their own party lines to do what they think is right, that actually, to me, signals that he is promoting what he thinks is right beyond party allegiance, which actually is, I think, the kind of candidate we want in this role. And finally, his work with the Perkins School for the Blind, which feeds into some of his donations to Democrats historically. His role is to advocate for the blind, for the disabled. He does that in part by engaging with state leaders, state legislators. These are all things I learned by talking to him. So, when we see a donation to a state legislator from how many years ago, and then you hear the story behind it, about how that donation was part of an advocacy effort to get more funding for the people in the school that need help, again, to me, that doesn't erode his candidacy, that strengthens his candidacy. So, to me, David Power is not just qualified, sort of qualified, maybe qualified, he's exceptionally qualified, and it would be a huge loss for the city to not move his candidacy forward. That's nothing to say about the other candidates that the Republican Committee put forward. I don't know them all very well. I've had a bunch of conversations with Steve Snyder. They've been great conversations. I have nothing negative to say about any of the candidates, but in looking at the opportunity in front of us with David Power, I think he's uniquely qualified, and for that reason, I will be supporting this nominee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mickley. Counsel Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I will support Counsel Humphrey's motion. I I am very impressed with how articulate my colleagues have been on this item so far, particularly happy that Counsel Mickley was able to share his discussion with the candidate for us, which has shined a lot. That made me even think more deeply about this candidate and his qualifications. So, I don't need to say anything more. I think enough has already been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a process question. Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Counsel Humphrey made a motion to substitute approval for denial. So, we are going to vote on the amendment first. Yes or no? Assuming that passes, we will then vote on Mr. Power, and a yes vote on the main item, assuming the amendment passes, is in favor of the appointment, and a no vote is denying the appointment, right?
Correct.
Just want to be clear that we're going to take two votes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So, my, I'll speak to both the amendment and the item in question. I will vote in favor of the amendment to substitute approval for denial, but when it comes to the main item, I'm going to vote no on it. It is because I believe the Republican City Committee has been very vocal on this appointment, and I believe that the mayor should work with the Republican City Committee on finding another candidate to replace Mr. Huffman, who has served in this position for several years. There are, as I think Counsel Oliver said, there are probably many Republicans in the city who can do the job that Mr. Huffman did so well, and I want the mayor to work with the Republican City Committee to find another candidate to fill the vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucas. Counsel Bixby?
Thank you. I'm rising tonight because I have, for better or for worse, a more personal experience of the Elections Commission than many of you might have. As you may recall, after my election, my opponent called for a recount. In situations like recounts, the Elections Commission is not just this random amorphous body that certifies elections after the fact. They look at your vote, usually anonymously, we'll get to that in a second, and determine who you voted for. They make decisions about whether or not a line outside a bubble is a crossout or not. They make decisions about whether or not an absentee ballot is opened in front of lawyers and members of the public, thereby perhaps having it out there who an individual resident voted for that happened. The Elections Commission also makes recommendations about questions like moving or combining polling places. These are particularly relevant questions as we face a time of increased vote by mail and questions about voter access. These are not partisan decisions. We should have bipartisan representation on the Commission because it's what's required by law and because it's what's right. But do we want a political party bureaucracy forcing us into a list of candidates? Or do we want to address the questions before us tonight, which is whether or not to confirm a highly qualified community leader who is willing to step into a challenging role at a contentious time? Someone who checks the legal boxes and is a highly qualified candidate for this role? I support the motion, and will be voting to confirm this community leader for this important Commissioner role tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Bixby.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise in another state of confusion created by the state or by government, wherein we have an Election Commission that they suggest should be representative of both of the political parties, not only in the state but in our city. And I can think of no greater time in our country than we need to show great respect for each party. I have no doubt that there are many Republicans in this city who can meet the qualifications that the mayor would like to see. I think we should definitely support the notion that there should be representation by Republicans and Democrats, and that the Republican Committee in this city has a right to nominate people, and that the mayor should, in fact, consider them fully and give to the Committee a reason why she doesn't, or the mayor doesn't. I'm sorry, because this is not just about our current mayor, but about all mayors and how we treat this Commission. So, I sat across from Mr. Powers at the Organizations and Services Committee, and I was very impressed with this gentleman. He clearly has the background. He's to serve here, but as I say, I think there are Republicans in this city, and we ought to reach out to the Committee and say, find people who will meet the mayor's interests and put them forward. So, in that matter, I will vote. If Counsel Humphrey's provision, amendment goes through, then I will vote to deny, to approve that but deny the nomination of this person. And I said to Mr. Power, this is not personal about my opinions about him. I do think he is an eminently qualified person, but I agree with Counsel Oliver and Counsel Lucas that we need to, that we need to try harder to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Farrell. Counsel Grossman?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My colleagues have spoken really thoughtfully on this issue, and I strongly align myself with the comments of Counselors Humphrey, Krensmann, Lipoff, Leary, Bixby, and others who are in support of Counsel Humphrey's motion in this nominee. I won't repeat their arguments because I agree with everything they said. I will just add that if the mayor had to consult the constituency for every appointment that she, or he, or they in the future were required to make, the mayor would do nothing but be consulting people about Commission appointments, because we have hundreds of them. And it is in, within her right to select someone that she thinks is appropriate, and I think part of that is about streamlining the process. I just, if we suddenly had an expectation or a precedent where every time we were appointing someone to the Parks and Rec Commission or one of the other many appointments, you had to figure out who the appropriate constituency is and consult those folks, we would never get anybody appointed and confirmed. This person seems extremely qualified. I have full confidence that he will be able to fill the role of administering full and fair, complete elections, and I support his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grossman. Counsel Malachi?
Thank you. Sorry if I'm a bit hoarse still. So, the, I think the Election Commission is not like our many other Commissions. It seems to be the only one or one of very few that has rules governed by the state. It's only got four appointed members, and we're charged with making sure it's even-handed and bipartisan. And it seems to me, in a city that is so dominated by Democrats, I mean, here we are. I'm the only independent slash unenrolled on this whole city council out of 24. We need to ensure that Republicans get the balance and representation they're entitled to under the state's law. I have to agree with Counsel Oliver that there's got to be somebody that both the mayor and the Republican City Committee can feel comfortable with, even if it's not one of the three names they named. I'm also, I'd like to note for the record, we saw it, but I don't think the public has. The League of Women Voters wrote us a letter in which they, you know, agreed with the mayor's...
Are you speaking to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. The League of Women Voters wrote us a letter in which they agreed with the mayor's, you know, right to appoint whoever she wanted. But having said that, the current confusion in Newton over the legally required process for the nomination and appointment of election commissioners leads LWBN to call for greater transparency and openness in appointments to the Election Commission, and in fact, to all Commissions. They had written back in 2024 a letter about relaying observations we had made during the election recount the city held on December 2, 2023. We had previous problems with the 2021 election when certification kind of went awry. Back to the League of Women Voters letter. In that letter, LWBN urged that the public be given more insight into how election commissioners are selected, given their essential function in a democracy, and that the process for selecting those commissioners be open to all residents of Newton. Therefore, we ask that in the future, the availability of any open position on the Commission be made public in a more robust manner, and that the process for selecting a commissioner be clarified. So, in this opening, there was no public process at all. The only people who seemed to know that there was even an opening was the mayor after she got a letter, and I believe it was August from Jan Huffman, saying that he anticipated resigning sometime in November after the election, and then the Republican City Committee itself.
Counsel Malachi, you have 10 seconds.
Can I have 1 minute?
Counsel Malachi is asking for suspension of the rules to add 1 minute to her time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you. I think that's the first time I've done that. Maybe not. But so, the, there was, the City Committee seems to have had no reply from the mayor saying, don't bother with your three names, I'm going to do it myself. So, they went ahead and did their process, which presumably involved letting, letting the other members of the City Committee know that they would be voting on who, which names to submit. So, those were the only people that even knew there was an opening, not the rest of the thousands of Republicans in Newton. So, I have to think that if there had been publicized an opening, other Republicans could have had a chance to submit their resumes, express their interest, maybe we would have even had somebody with actual election experience, but we did not get that. So, League of Women Voters is asking for a better process in the future. I think if we want a better process, we should start it now, and the only way to change outcomes is to not accept the process that we got here. So, I will be voting, I don't even care if it's substitute or not, it seems, why are we bothering? But I will be voting against the, I will, I'll be voting to deny the nomination, although I agree with many others that the gentleman nominated is quite personable and experienced and acceptable, but I have to think there's lots of other people who never got the chance...
Counsel Malachi, you have to ask for more time.
Because they weren't a friend of the mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Malachi. Counsel Lipoff?
Just quickly, I forgot to mention, just to testify, I was on the council for 12 years, and then I left for six and came back for 12. When I was off the council, the mayor at that time nominated me to be on the Election Commission. I ended up being chair of the Election Commission. They didn't ask the Democratic Committee in Newton for a list of names. They didn't ask if they wanted me. The mayor put me up and went through this same process. So, just to testify, that's my experience on the Election Commission.
Thank you, Counsel Lipoff. Any more comments on the motion? Oh, Counsel Oliver?
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Vice President. I still, in this entire conversation, everyone here is correct. The mayor gets to make the nomination. I am not, like, I am not suggesting that we cede control to the Republican Committee. I am asking for the simplest of process modifications here, because I believe that the process that perhaps the state, I know this is going to sound silly, especially coming from me, that process can be improved upon. I'm simply asking for a little collaboration between the second-largest political party in the city of Newton and the mayor. That's it. No change of, you know, control. The mayor ultimately gets to make the appointment. That's what the law reads, and that's okay. I get it. I actually agree with it. This is the one committee in our city where bipartisan political representatives, easy for me to say, from the top two parties are required. Let's let those parties have some sort of input in the process, and the person who is actually, or the two people that, to a degree, represent them as a political party. That's it. No ceding of control, no ulterior motives, just doing the right thing, at least from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. Please, please. Please, thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments? Counsel Getz?
Just a question. I, to the Chair, I assume that we need 16 votes to deny a nominee?
It's a simple majority.
I think it's 16 to deny. Well, I am in support of John Oliver's recommendation. I feel as if it's not asking much in the sense of, you know, making a nominee brought forth by the party that they feel as if it's representational of their party. So, I, if, in fact, we've gotten that message from the Republican Party, I think it's important for us to acknowledge that, and she may have the right, but I think that she needs to look at the practice. And I believe that in terms of what's happening, both at the federal level and here in the city, I think it's important to have people feel as if they're represented.
Thank you, Counsel Getz. Okay, now, I'm not seeing any other hands online, or we don't take public comment, sir. Public comment was, we don't take public comment during these meetings. We take them in committee meetings, and the committee chair did that. So, on the motion from, from Counsel Humphrey to replace denial with approval, let's call the roll.
Counsel Albrecht?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bixby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs? Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentow?
No.
Counsel Getz?
No.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalis?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Krensmann?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lobavitz?
No.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley? Malachi? Aye, sorry. Excuse me. Sorry, Counsel Malachi. No. Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries 18 yays, 4 nays, 1 absent, 1 recusal.
Okay, so, now, we, we have the item before us, and a yes vote on that item would approve David Powers, a no vote would deny. On that motion, is there any conversation? Counsel Block?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just, I'm reminded of the mayor's words when she met with us in the school committee last year about listening and how we don't seem to be doing a very good job of that. And this might be an opportunity to listen a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Block. Any other comments? Okay, with no other comments, let's call the roll. A yes vote approves David Powers, a no vote denies.
Counsel Albrecht?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bixby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
No.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Downs? Counsel Farrell?
No.
Counsel Gentow?
No.
Counsel Getz?
No.
Counsel Greenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Grossman?
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey?
Aye.
Counsel Kalis?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
Aye.
Counsel Krensmann?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lobavitz?
No.
Counsel Lucas?
No.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Nope.
Counselor Wright.
No.
Motion carries 13 yays, 9 nays, 1 absent, 1 recusal.
All right. Thank you, and the President will be back.
We don't take any public comment during hearings, and we don't take any comments from the audience.
I think your microphone is off, Mr. President.
On now? Thank you.
Yep. All right, item 149-24, this item was heard on, on January 8th. This is an ordinance amendment to prohibit the sale of tobacco in Newton to anyone born on or after 112000. In committee, it was, we, we had a couple of hearings on it, held it a couple of times. We did end up taking public comments on this, including from Commissioner Lau and a few residents. On January 8th, the, the committee, Programs and Services, voted to amend the proposed item, so that it now reads that anyone born after March 1st, 2004, would be prohibited from purchasing tobacco in the city of Newton. So what this is, is essentially a lifetime prohibition for anyone purchasing tobacco who's born after that date in the city of Newton. It's, it's not a prohibition on children purchasing, it's, it applies to the people who are about to turn 21 in a month and a half, but it would last forever after that. So it essentially phases out tobacco sales in the city of Newton. And the committee voted, did I give the committee a vote? It was 5 to 2 in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Kritzman. Folks want to speak on this? Counselor Leary, Albright, Block.
Farrell, as well, and then, hold on. Go ahead. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is something close to my heart. Early on in my career as city councillor, I, I did work on raising the age from 18 to 21, like our neighbor Needham had done previously. And when this came up, I did do a little more research about tobacco. And I, it's, it's really one of the few things that when used as directed will kill you. And then I was actually surprised to find some data that smoking kills more people than alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, suicides, AIDS combined. It kills close to 500,000 people a year. I, if, if all the young people or children who became new regular daily smokers each year, out of those, those people, 1/3 will ultimately die from it. And I think I'm not telling people here anything they don't know, but some of these statistics, if you dive into them, are quite compelling. The amount of, the amount of people it kills, the amount of, of loved ones people lose, the amount of, of health insurance costs that go to this, loss of productivity, it goes on and on and on, the costs of tobacco use. I did consult with my 20-year-old son, who will be turning 21 on March 28th as well, of 2004, just to get his idea about it, and he thought it was important that we don't have any new smokers. So I am fully in support of this, and I think it's one of the more important votes that we will take this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leary. Counselor Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the complaints that folks that are against this have is that it, it takes away free will. And my, my comment at the Programs and Services Committee meeting was that tobacco is not like ice cream or vegetable soup. We're not taking away a product that is a typical product that a consumer buys. We're taking away a product, as Counselor Leary told you, is in the data, kills the people, kills when used as directed. And if it doesn't kill, it also harms and causes other disease. A physician spoke the other night at the, at the public hearing that Counselor Kritzman offered, and he said that during the COVID epidemic, he's an intensivist, I think is what he called himself, and he saw the people with COVID and the difference that people with COVID who smoked had with respect to life from the people who didn't smoke. It was alarming to him, and he was there to speak in favor of this. This is not a ban, as Counselor Kritzman said, this is a slow phase-out over a very long time. And for anyone who currently smokes, they're, they're still able to smoke, it's just that we won't have anybody new addicted to it. And I'm glad that Counselor Leary pointed out that tobacco kills more than all these other vices combined. We've heard a lot about cannabis and alcohol and all kinds of other vices that people say we're not banning, and we're not banning them, because tobacco kills more than all of them combined. If you're not convinced by the health aspects, one thing that ought to convince you is the cost aspects. The cost of helping all of these folks who are dying of, because of the use of tobacco adds a tremendous expense to the health of our country and the cost of our healthcare. Um, you know, this is something that government does frequently when the product is harmful. And just, just this past week, the FDA banned red dye number 3. So this is something that happens commonly when a product is discovered to be very harmful to its citizens. I particularly liked something that Counselor Humphrey said at the meeting the other night at Programs and Services. We have been taking steps towards the cessation of the use of tobacco for 6 decades, starting in 1966, when they started to put a warning about cigarettes on the packages. We've taken ads of tele- off television for smoking, we have, in Newton, we've taken many steps, we've, you can't smoke in a public building. We're trying to do everything we can except this to get people to stop smoking. And this is a good step to, with a long phase-out, to make our, our citizens healthier. I hope that you will support this. It's interesting that Counselor Leary talked about her son, that the night of this docket item coming at Programs and Services, there were 4 members of the Youth Commission who were being voted on, and I think it was Counselor Malachi that asked each of them to say their opinion on whether they thought this was a good law or not, and they all unanimously said, "This is the right thing to do, this is the time to do it." So I hope that we will join the 4 members of the Youth Commission who just got appointed tonight by our votes and, and pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Albright. Counselor Block. Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, January 16th was an important anniversary that went unrecognized. On that date, 106 years ago, the 18th Amendment to the Constitution was ratified. This amendment declared that the production, transportation, and sale of alcohol was illegal. Thus began a period of our history, which we call prohibition. Prohibition worked so well that on December 5, 1933, the 21st Amendment to the Constitution repealed the 18th Amendment. I bring up prohibition because that appears to be the goal of the proponents, excuse me, proponents of this ordinance. In discussing this proposed ordinance with Counselor Albright, she informed me that several other towns had adopted this ordinance. Her hope was that the state legislature would notice and take similar action. In this way, the sale of tobacco products would, over time, become illegal throughout the state. It seems to me that the reason why this country banned alcohol is the same reason why we are considering the generational ban on tobacco products today. Alcohol and tobacco are both bad for your health. When used to excess, these substances can be fatal. So I ask my fellow counselors, would you vote to adopt a similar generational ban on alcohol? And if so, will you docket such an item? And if you would not support a generational ban on alcohol, why do so with tobacco products? I understand the goal of keeping people safe. I agree that government should be a force for good. We can admire the advocates of the 18th Amendment to the Constitution for their idealism and for their progressive values. But it did not take long for a progressive with different priorities to lead the effort to repeal prohibition. His name was Franklin Delano Roosevelt. In 1932, he made it a major part of his campaign, and by the end of 1933, prohibition was over. History has much to teach us. Please join me in rejecting this well-meaning but misguided proposal. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Block. Next, I have Counselor Farrell.
First, I want to acknowledge the sincerity of my colleagues who proposed and support this ordinance as an effort to reduce tobacco-related use and harm. I strongly support your concerns. Second, I want to state clearly that I believe that there is no redeeming purpose for the consumption of any tobacco-related product. Health risks, including death, are beyond dispute. This is a long and difficult war, but we are winning. Tobacco-related use is declining. Notwithstanding the massive and intensive tobacco-related promotions over the decades, according to the Center for Disease Control, the number of smokers has dropped from 50.1 million in 1965 to fewer than 28 million in 2024. Still too many, but a nearly 50% drop. More importantly, adolescent youth, 16 to 17-year-olds, has dropped from 17% to less than 5% from 2009 to 2019. Also still too many, especially because the average age of new smokers is 14. We achieved this great success in 3 ways: major, local, and national public awareness programs, comprehensive elementary and secondary education programs, and legal actions prohibiting sale and use by minors. I do not believe this ordinance does anything to support and strengthen these efforts. I would happily join any effort that would do so. I believe that at its very core, what this ordinance does is create a special class of adults over the age of 21 who will not be able to make a personal, legal decision for themselves, other than that any other adult can make, simply because of an arbitrary guideline, a contrived birth date. Over their lives, we talk with our children about many dangers, including the deadly threat of tobacco-related use. We extend those conversations with 10, over, with 10 years of educational programming from 3rd through 12th grades. And then, after all that, through this ordinance, we will then be, then saying to our children, "Sorry, but we just don't trust you, those who are born after March 1st, 2024, 2004, to make good decisions about alcohol, tobacco-related use after you turn 21." It is unfortunately the kind of blatantly unnecessary government outreach that infuriates so many people. We will limit the rights of some, only some adults, because we think we know what's best for them after they turn 21. And we will do that with a law that is factually unprovable and practically unenforceable. Please, let's act to improve existing programs to dissuade minors from using tobacco-related products. If we don't know what those improvements might be, let's ask Programs and Services to meet with representatives of young people, such as those from Newton North, students who spoke at yesterday's MLK celebration, and talk with them in open, full, nonjudgmental, non-threatening conversation. Let's move forward with carrots, not sticks. And if you insist on using a stick, then deny the sale of tobacco-related products to everyone over the age of 21. Thank you, and I ask you to join me in opposing this legislation.
Thank you, Counselor Farrell. Next, I have Counselor Mickley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's really 2 separate issues at stake here. One is the issue of youth tobacco use, and the other is the issue of adults' choice around tobacco. Around youth tobacco use, my stance is clear. I think we need to be doing all we can to prevent the use of tobacco amongst our youth. This issue is actually personal to me. 10 years ago, I was a member of Brookline Town Meeting, and I remember when an 18-year-old from Brookline High came to Town Meeting and said, "Increase the age, because right now, there's 19-year-olds that are bringing tobacco into the school." We increased the age, the ripple effect went across the state eventually to 21, eventually across the country, and now we have Tobacco 21. And I think that was positive policy towards reducing youth tobacco use. I think we can go further. 95% of tobacco use starts before 21, 99% of tobacco use starts before 26. I'm open and glad to file an amendment to restrict tobacco use today, immediately, for anyone 26 and under. If we really want to attack the issue of youth tobacco use, I say we focus on that issue now, and we do it effectively. There might be other ideas that Counselor Farrell mentioned, using the carrot, there might be better and more severe consequences we can place on store owners for selling to youth. Counselor Albright mentioned that the Youth Commission spoke at our meeting last week. I actually heard something different. I heard them say, "There's an issue of tobacco use in our schools. Kids are getting vapes, they're getting tobacco. We need to figure out how they're getting them, why they're getting them, and attack and address those measures." There's a separate issue of adult tobacco use, and where you decide where adults start is an open question, but the issue of what future 40-year-olds and 60-year-olds and 80-year-olds can do with their free choice around tobacco is, A, something I don't think that addresses the issue of youth tobacco use, or tobacco use in general, since most tobacco use starts at a young age, and B, I think, does come with consequences and costs. Our power to limit is not limitless. Every time we establish a new rule, we have to think about the pros and cons, and how it advances policy and how it lands with residents. And what I've heard from residents, and what I feel myself, is that this is local government taking our power too far. We do it all the time, and we do it all the time with often good reasons. We tell people what they can do with their trees, with their land, and again, with good reasons. But telling a future 60-year-old whether they can or can't buy tobacco, when it doesn't address the core use of tobacco and the core starting age that people use tobacco, 99% of people before 26, I think it erodes trust in local government. I think it undermines our ability to implement those limiting powers when we actually need it. And for that reason, I completely understand the intentions behind those supporting it. I agree with those intentions, I want to make sure tobacco gets out of the hands of our youth. I just don't think this is the right way of doing it, so for that reason, I won't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mickley. Counselor Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all who have spoken so fine this evening. There's something that hasn't been mentioned with respect to this ordinance and what it will eventually do. It will, it will help protect children who live in households in which their parents smoke. Secondhand smoke is probably just as lethal as regular smoke. This will help phase that out. The other thing I want to say, and we got an email over the weekend, I think it was, from a healthcare professional who has been working on legislation like this, is that these tobacco companies, they are working behind the scenes to market their products to children. They are. You know, there are smoking products, and then they became flavored smoking products. Then it was smokeless tobacco, chewing tobacco, again, with flavors. When that faded out, then it's vaping, and I think Massachusetts has a ban on flavored vaping. And now it's little pouches with nicotine that you can just put inside your mouth, and those are flavored, and children could be addicted to those. This help, this ordinance helps phase this out, so it can protect children from the harms of tobacco. So I hope this council passes this new ordinance. I'm gonna vote for it, and I hope everyone does. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucas. Counselor Danberg, then Counselor Gentile, after that, Counselors Kritzman and Greenberg, and then Malachi. Go ahead, please, Counselor Danberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, Counselor Mickley, for the statistics and information that First of all, thank you, Counselor Mickley, for the statistics and information that you gave us. However, from that information, I draw a completely different conclusion. There was a pulmonologist on TV not too long ago who said that the way to keep adults from smoking, which we all know is a killer, is to keep our young people from smoking. J.P. Lorillard sent a lawyer to a meeting here at City Hall that I attended. I think this was a couple of years ago when we were raising the age of smoking. And they didn't, they, as Counselor Lucas has pointed out, these companies, the tobacco companies, make it their business to make sure that they, in every way that they can, start hooking young people on nicotine. And the amount of nicotine, as we know, in vaping products, which are touted to be safer than tobacco products, has increased by a lot so that if they, while they don't get smoke into their lungs, they do get massive amounts of nicotine. The costs of smoking are tremendous all over the world. The incidence of smoking has gone down in the United States, mostly among adults. But all of Asia, Africa, many Third World countries on many continents are the targets of these tobacco companies. I also asked my three children what their thoughts were, my young adult children, and they said, "Go for it. This is something that will help this country, it will help the health of our young people and as they get older." Yes, if we can keep them from smoking when they are young in any way that we have to do to accomplish that, that's a good thing. And remember when helmets were not required? Remember the scuttlebutt over helmets and taking away our rights to become tissue donors? My husband and many of his friends, when he went to dental school and they were in medical school, used to refer to motorcycle drivers, riders, before the helmet law as tissue donors, because they tended to be young, otherwise healthy people, who were candidates for donating their organs. And this is the corollary that we're looking at in smoking. So I will be supporting this gladly, and I hope you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Danberg. Next, I have Counselor Gentile.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear at the outset, I do not smoke. I never have smoked. I don't intend on smoking, so this isn't going to affect me either way. And I certainly understand the healthcare risks that are associated with smoking. And if I actually thought that this action by the Newton City Council was going to somehow stop or prevent one person from smoking, then I guess I would consider voting for it. But do we really think that because the Newton City Council is going to try and tell people that they don't have access, that they can't have access to a product, as Counsel Block pointed out and others, that is 100% legal, that that's actually going to prevent them from getting cigarettes and smoking? I don't think so. The only other point I wanted to make is, I don't know how you folks felt about yesterday, but yesterday was probably one of the most depressing days that I have had recently. And that's because I woke up and I thought to myself, "I cannot believe that I'm living in a country that would elect a convicted felon, a narcissist," and I can use a whole bunch of other not-so-positive words to describe the man that was sworn into office yesterday. And the problem is, it's stuff like this, where we think that we know better than everybody else, and we're going to tell people what they can do and not do when it comes to purchasing a legal product. And you can't just poo-hoo the alcohol argument. You can't just poo-hoo the fact that this city embraced marijuana establishments. I mean, it just flies in the face. So the reason, and people just don't seem to get it, especially Newton Democrats. People in this country are sick and tired of people like the Newton City Council taking actions that are telling them what to do and what not to do, even though it's legal. And people are fed up with that. And as a result, we have a buffoon who is now running this country again. And when are we going to ever learn that, you know, maybe we don't, maybe we aren't smarter than everybody else, like we seem to think at times? And at some point, well, unless the man, it wouldn't surprise me if he tried to change the Constitution to allow people to run for a third term, but the only thing I can hang my hat on is that this will hopefully be it, won't have to deal with this again.
Counselor Gentile, you're running out of time. Do you want another 30 seconds or a minute?
No, I think people probably understand the point that I'm making. And, you know, wokeness, look what it got us, okay? So let people do what they want to do when it comes to legal products, whether they choose to use them or not, and stay out of their homes.
Thank you, Counselor Gentile. Counselor Krensmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I agree with my colleague from Word Four about how difficult yesterday was. I found myself very sad as I watched the proceedings, what used to be my favorite day every four years. It was very difficult to watch, but I think that's where my agreement with him ends on this issue. I asked my kids, who are all born, who have not yet aged 21, they're born after March 1st, 2004, and they all supported this. I asked a bunch of their friends, they supported this, and I asked, as you heard, the members who were appointed to the Youth Commission were all that, and they supported this. It's not a huge sample size. It's significant but not huge. And what I can tell you is that everyone to whom this would apply supported it. The only people who I've heard opposition from are the people to whom it wouldn't apply and the people who have a financial interest in making it apply or preventing it from applying generally. So that spoke to me. To me, the product, tobacco, has no beneficial use. When used properly, it kills. It kills the user, and it kills people around the user. To me, it is unlike cannabis, it is unlike alcohol in that regard. It is more like assault weapons, it is more like guns, it is more like asbestos. What we do in our society when we find products like that that have no beneficial use, we prohibit them. We get rid of them. We try to get them out of our society. I acknowledge that they're adults, it is legal today. This wouldn't apply to them. They get to keep smoking, they get to keep buying their cigarettes. But what we do is we phase it out, and that's the responsible way to do this. So I'm highly supportive of this. We are just the Newton City Council. We can't prohibit it statewide. We have limited power, what we can do here, but we should use our power for the good. We should help future residents of this community. If the state opts to make it illegal or to phase it out, that would be fantastic. If not, then yeah, people can drive one town over, two towns over, and they can purchase their product. We, as a community, don't need to contribute to the proliferation of, again, a harmful product that is highly addictive. Okay? So it's not just a product that kills the user. Not only that, it makes the user keep using it until the user dies. I'm going to support this, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krensmann. Next, I have Counselors Greenberg, Malachi, Wright, Grossman, and Humphrey in that order. Counselor Greenberg, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The comments made about government overreach reminds me of the arguments made many years ago about the requirements to use safety belts when driving and to wear helmets when riding a motorcycle. It's clear that many lives have been saved by this government overreach. It will be clear many years from now that this item will have saved many lives also. So I am in strong support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Greenberg. Next, I have Counselor Malachi.
Thank you. I'll try not to be too repetitive. I agree with, and I think it was very well put, how Counselor Krensmann just made a statement. Big difference between prohibition in 19, whatever it was, 16, 18, and a gradual incremental year-by-year increase in prohibition of purchasing cigarettes. Prohibition was banned alcohol from everyone all at once. We're not trying to do that. I think this is a particularly elegant solution to reducing the availability of a dangerous product, and I'm very appreciative that Brookline took the step and established its constitutionality through the SJC. I see a big difference between cigarettes, alcohol, sugar, all the things that people have been sending us, you know, what-about letters about. I remember when I had to fly back and forth to Chicago and Detroit on airplanes where people could smoke. I remember when there was smoking in offices. We've got rid of all that. They still allow drinking on airplanes. There are, there's a whole range. I don't personally drink, I don't think alcohol is particularly good for you, but most people handle it. There's a whole range of, from social drinkers, occasional drinkers, to people who may be alcoholic, and a whole lot of people in between. But has anyone ever met a social smoker? I don't think so. It's uniquely addictive and the way it's marketed, and we're up against a tobacco industry that is trying to constantly find new customers, or as I would call them, victims. I think the proposal before us is the best that we can do. It will reduce the people who can get cigarettes when they are over 21 for their friends who are under 21. It won't impact anyone who can buy cigarettes or tobacco legally now, and I will be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Malachi. Next, I have Counselor Wright, then Grossman, then Humphrey. Anyone else? Farrell again. Go ahead, Counselor Wright.
Thank you, President Loretto. I'm not going to repeat many of the arguments to raise the age to buy tobacco, but I want to give you one example, as I am a victim of secondhand smoke. My mother started smoking as a teenager, and she tried to quit, but for the first three kids, she was still smoking. But she finally quit for the last two of my siblings. Do you know what? The first three, my brother and I and my sister, we were sick with so many different ailments throughout our childhood, and we're still sick. And my youngest two siblings, they had probably maybe 10%, if that, ailments during their childhood and even now. Secondhand smoke does affect a lot more people, and I support anything to stop kids from starting to smoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Grossman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't repeat others' comments. I think Counselors Krensmann and Malachi in particular hit it just right in explaining how I feel about this. In particular, Counselor Krensmann drew the comparison to assault weapons, and I was thinking about guns more generally, where we know that the highest risk factor of being injured by a gun is proximity to a gun. I feel similarly about these tobacco products. And I disagree with my colleague from Word Four about his statement that, you know, this won't actually prevent anybody from smoking. I think it will. It's that simple. To me, this is a no-brainer, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grossman. Counselor Humphrey, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Building on the comments from Chair Krensmann and Counselor Malachi and also what Counselor Grossman just said, you know, the approach that we've taken, and we did discuss this very thoroughly over quite a long period in committee, I mean, I think it's been almost a year since our first meeting, if I remember correctly, and we really considered a lot of the different angles here. The approach we're taking is one of gradualism. It is, you know, drawing on the nudge theory that was published in 2008 by Cass Sunstein and others, the idea that by making small policy changes, you can start shifting society into a better direction, shifting people's personal behavior and choices into a better direction. The idea here is to reduce the ease of access. And as Counselor Albright said, something that I talked about in committee, is the idea that this is consistent with the policies we have already taken as a city on this issue. We raised the age from 18 to 21. We started having inspections by the Health Department where they have people go in and attempt to buy cigarettes and things like that underage. The idea there is keep it away from the high school kids. Well, something like this keeps it away from the high school kids via older siblings, it also keeps it away from our college students and so forth. It keeps it, somebody who, you know, maybe moved here after having started smoking, it's going to be a little bit harder to get their products. They're going to have to go somewhere else, and maybe that's going to help them in the process of quitting and so forth. That's the theory behind this. Prohibition of alcohol obviously had its issues because of, as Counselor Malachi said, kind of trying to do it all at one time. That's not what we're doing here. We are trying to make a gradual change. It's worth mentioning, though, actually, according to the research, the alcohol prohibition had significant impacts on reducing drinking overall, reducing severe abuse of alcohol, liver cirrhosis, mortality, et cetera. So, you know, I'm not making an argument for bringing that back, but I'm just saying that it's a little bit misleading, some of the things that get thrown around in retrospect about that. I'm sympathetic on some level to the remarks that Counselor Gentile said. I get the idea that, like, you know, a lot of people feeling like life is getting worse and, you know, in little ways every day, and maybe this is an example, except, again, we're not prohibiting existing customers, we're trying to gradually phase this out. And I think the argument, if you don't want certain national political outcomes, is to offer better things and a better world, not to say, "Oh, we're going to continue letting things get slightly worse," because it gets slightly worse when someone in your family gets lung cancer and dies of that, right? That's at minimum, that is slightly worse, and that is the type of thing that fuels political disintegration and reaction. This is a positive step that we're taking, and I understand there's a consistency issue here, but we're not talking about alcohol tonight or marijuana. We're not talking about gambling apps and things like that. There's any number of vices. We did talk about them in committee. We talked about a lot of these things in committee. But the idea is to make this a little bit harder, a little bit more inconvenient, and gradually phase it out, and that is going to help keep people from starting and also nudge people into quitting if they are affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Humphrey. I'm going to recognize Counselor Kelly, who has not yet spoken. Now, go back to Counselor Farrell. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, and if not, we'll move this to a vote. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak, but I've been going over in my head this personal story that I experienced last weekend. My sample pool is smaller than even Counselor Krensmann's. I spent last Saturday afternoon with my sister-in-law, who had recently been released from a rehab facility after leaving the hospital and the ICU with pneumonia. She's on oxygen, I don't think she'll ever be off it. She's had two bouts of lung cancer and surgeries, she has COPD, she had pneumonia. She started smoking as a teenager. And I told her about what we were trying to do here, and she said tearfully, "Please pass it. I started as a teenager. I thought I was exempt, I thought I was cool." By the way, she was surrounded at home by older siblings and a mother who smoked. She was just, it was all around her. And so my experience is... And so my experience is watching my sister-in-law now, who I think is going to be dying pretty soon because she started to smoke as a teenager. I like the intention of this, to try and protect the youth, to try and, again, as I've been saying, slowly phase it in. And I just think about DeeDee Kelly. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Counselor Farrell, I think you're getting the last word this evening, unless anyone else wishes to speak. And then we're going to vote on the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Overwhelmingly, people tonight have talked about the dangers of cigarette smoking. No one disagrees with that. Absolutely no one. It's terrible. The question is, how do we get to stop it? And I don't believe, you know, there was a question here, we don't have, we have limited power. We don't have limited power. Instead of worrying about what's going to happen with our kids after they turn 21 and they are adults, we should be talking about why aren't our educational programs in schools working now? If they were working, we wouldn't be thinking about this law. We need to spend some money, go to the schools, go to the superintendent and say, what is this program you've got? Why are kids still smoking? How can we help you prevent that? Because you're the one in touch with kids. And how do we go to parents and say, talk to your kids about smoking? And do it in an honest way, not a way that condemns them, and not a way that suggests that there will be a penalty if they say, okay, Mom, I tried to smoke. There's been no conversation tonight about how to stop it in a positive way. Yes, we made people wear helmets on motorcycles. Yes, we did. And yes, we...
Counselor Farrell, you're going to need another minute or so. Would you like that?
If I have another minute, please.
Of course. All in favor, another minute for Counselor Farrell. Please say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, please.
All of these laws that we made to stop people from doing certain things in their interest were comprehensive. We didn't say only people who are 17 to 21 must wear helmets. We said everybody must wear helmets. The problem with this law is that it creates a special group, which in my opinion, doesn't stop any kid from smoking. We've got to talk to kids from first grade to 12th grade. That's what we can control. And we should be talking about how do we help the superintendent and those teachers in the schools who have daily contact with kids? How do we help them talk to kids honestly? And I know some of you have said you spoke to your kids, but there's a broad spectrum of issues here. And I think we need to address them. But the biggest one is, there's very positive stuff we could do, but it isn't saying, no, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leary. Last word, then, I think.
Very briefly, I just wanted to respond to my counselor from Ward Eight, that we've been doing things to stop smoking, to educate people, since about the early 1960s. We've been doing it with not allowing advertising, television, billboards, all this. We do education in schools. Your primary care doctor talks to children about not smoking, among other things. There's so much, I'm not going to go through it all, but we've done a tremendous amount, and we've been effective. As you said, about 50% less people smoke, and there's fewer smokers every year. It is working. So I'm going to say we've been doing it incrementally for the last 65 years.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll entertain briefly one more comment, but I really do not want to have a back and forth. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. But I think we need to be, we've been doing all these things, and if they were working, we wouldn't be talking about this ordinance tonight. We need to start talking about what isn't working, and that's mostly within the schools and families. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, unless someone has something very pressing to say, I think we've probably exhausted the discussion. Let me, before we ask the clerk to call the roll, let me just commend the council for what, in my observation, as I listened to discussion and debate this evening, this is exactly the type of discussion we should be having as a council. And this is the type of discussion that should make us feel good about our work, and I think exemplifies to the resonance of this city that we take our work very seriously. Whether you vote for this item or against it, the comments have been heartfelt. They've been thoughtful. They've been deliberate. So I really want to thank all of you for that. And I want to thank the committee in particular for the hard work that it put in as it came forward tonight. Again, regardless of the outcome, the process here has worked. And I think the process has worked very well. So with that, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Albright.
Aye.
Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Bixby.
Aye.
Counselor Block.
No.
Counselor Danberg.
Aye.
Counselor Downs. Counselor Farrell.
No.
Counselor Gentow.
No.
Counselor Getz.
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey.
Aye.
Counselor Kalis.
Aye.
Counselor Kelly.
Aye.
Counselor Krensmann.
Aye.
Counselor Leary.
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff.
Aye.
Counselor Lobavitz.
Aye.
Counselor Lucas.
Aye.
Counselor Malachi.
Aye.
Counselor Mickley.
No.
Counselor Oliver.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
President Laredo.
Aye.
Motion carries 19 ayes, four nays, one absent.
All right, colleagues. Thank you. We have one more item to discuss this evening. Counselor Oliver's land use, zoning and planning items. So Vice Chair Oliver will tee it up for us, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. And I will go as quickly as I possibly can and still be kind of helpful here, or at least attempt to be. The item is 31724. "Honor, the mayor requesting discussion, possible amendments to retaining wall regulations for multifamily, commercial, industrial, civic buildings in Section 542 of Chapter 30," excuse me, "zoning." And really what we're talking about at this point, and I've got my handy-dandy notes here, we're talking about one very specific phrase that we voted on when we approved our VCODs as part of the MBTA compliance package back in, I believe the vote was taken in November of last year. Sorry, I'm lying. '23, last term, I should say. And what we're really talking about here are retaining walls that are over four feet currently require a special permit in our VCOD. The state has come back and said, we'll give you conditional compliance, but you have to change that. They don't want us to require, they cannot allow us to require a special permit that would impede the development of housing in the VCOD. And primarily, I think what we'll get to here in a few minutes is we're really talking about in the MRT VCOD. I think the VC2 and VC3 is well in hand, but I'll try to make clear as to why. Conditional approval, got it super great. The Planning and Development Department has unofficial, has an unofficial nod from the EOHLC that eight-foot retaining walls that allow parking on-site is probably okay with them. They didn't give us the official okay, but we have their nod. That's actually really important here, and you'll hear why. So what we currently have in front of us tonight is a solution that has a couple of, you know, conditions here. When there's a retaining wall that is used to accommodate parking that is underneath or inside the building, that's okay. You can exceed four feet if you need to. However, when it is on-site, not part of the building structure itself, and not accommodating parking underneath the building, you're allowed to have a retaining wall up to four feet high on-site to accommodate the parking that is required as part of MRT only. I'm trying to kind of make the salient points here as clear as I can. I'm sure we'll have some conversation about this. Now, we also, right before us, right, is the ability or the requirement that if you have a retaining wall on-site between four and eight feet tall, that requires or will trigger a site plan review. Over eight feet, as I mentioned before, would still trigger a special permit. I'm seeing some nods and a couple of stares, like, keep going. Okay. What I do want to add, however, is there were several concerns raised because this item did not come out of Zap unanimously. I believe the vote was 412, two abstentions, three abstentions, sorry, my bad. So it was four in favor, one opposed, three abstentions. The two concerns that I wanted to relay tonight that I think are fair, and we might hear some other concerns here tonight, but two that I know that I heard are, number one, the state has not done any analysis that would indicate that four feet or eight feet or 10 feet is actually better or worse, or more applicable, or a better solution than another. They're simply saying four feet is too low, eight feet feels about right, if you must require a special permit. And the other thing that I wanted to convey as well, excuse me, is that some of the concerns that were raised revolved around the fact that we've seen several instances, one of which is in one of our village centers, where retaining walls well over four feet, some of which are well over eight feet, can and have had negative impacts on the direct abutters. In other words, if you're building a retaining wall at eight feet, the concern is that that eight feet could be seven and a half feet off of a property line, right up against someone's property. And if you put a six-foot-tall fence, for example, on top of that retaining wall, that's getting really tall, really close to someone else's property. As a way of relating some of the concerns. Also, I should also mention that this is the last item that is standing between us and full approval of our plan from EOHLC. That said, we can go back to EOHLC, work with our planning and development team, and come up with alternatives to this. This is not the only opportunity or the only bite at the apple we will have here. If we reject this, we can go back and come up with other ideas. I think that summarizes it pretty much right down the middle, but there you have it. So I hope that makes sense to everybody, and myself and Counselor Baker will do our best to answer any other questions. Thank you.
All right. So before I recognize Councillors Baker and Wright and anyone else in the room who wants to be, I see several in the room. I do know from the clerk, this must be acted on by February 12th. Is that correct? If it's not acted upon by February 12th, it has to go back to the committee and restart the public hearing process, so there would be some delay, so people know. Not impossible. Certainly can be done. We have time for that, but just noting that.
Actually, I'm not entirely sure that that is true, given where we are with the state and their, and I might butcher this term, right? I believe we're now under temporary but emergency regulations. So I'm not sure that Feb 12th is still in place.
You know...
Completely clear. I'm not sure about that.
All right. You can, Madam Clerk, there's a procedural points. Go ahead and speak directly to Counselor Oliver.
City Attorney Lee is the one who reminded me this morning. So we can discuss this later, too, and I would gladly let counsel know.
So, just one second. This may be, depending on what we act upon tonight, the question may not be relevant, because let's see where the discussion goes. We can go from there. So I have Councillors Baker, Wright, Albright, Getz. Anybody else right now? Hold on. Lobavitz, Krensmann. And others can speak. I can only write down so many at one time. All right, Counselor Baker, the floor is yours.
Point of order, Council President. I put it on second call.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. President, that the custom is...
Counselor Lucas, your point of order is very well taken. Forgive me, and you have the floor first, please.
Can I just make one clarification before you?
Counselor Baker, I'm going to let Counselor Lucas speak first, and then I'll go right to you. Go ahead, please.
So I swear, this is the very first time I ever said point of order.
I'm duly impressed, Counselor Lucas, so go ahead, please.
There's a lot of times where I have to bite my tongue, but this is one where I will not. So I don't know how to say this, but I do not like this ordinance at all. Zero percent. I do not like this at all. I think this is a bad ordinance. And I do not blame Zap. I do not blame the mayor. I do not blame the Planning Department. This is coming from HLC, Housing and Livable Communities. They want us to change our ordinance with respect to retaining walls, as Counselor Oliver has stated before me. This isn't about housing. We approved the zoning to create the housing. The state knows that we can create 8,399 housing units in the MBTA compliance zones or lots. They know this. They also know that we also included in our VCOD lots greater than 30,000 square feet and the Village of Auburndale. The housing, the zoning, that's all set. We did that last term. But there are problems with this ordinance that just, you know, it just bugs me. And, you know, Counsel Oliver said it, and it's in the ordinance that's in our Friday packet. They're talking about parking that is beneath grade. If you remember last term, when we were going over the certain rules and formulas that we had to do with respect to parking, we were told constantly that the parking requirement, it was going to be assumed surface-level parking. It was supposed to be surface-level parking. Now the state is saying you need to change your retaining walls, your retaining wall ordinance, so to allow the underground parking by right. Well, which one is it? We were told it was surface parking, and they're moving the goalposts on us. And I really don't appreciate that at all. I really don't. You know, the state, you know, wants to take control of our local zoning. The 24 of us controlled the local zoning, not the state. We asserted that earlier this term when we amended our retaining wall ordinance. And that came from Zap. It came from planning. It came from all of us. And that was a good ordinance. That is a good ordinance. Any retaining wall greater than four feet in height requires a special permit. I like that. We did very good work on that. But yeah, this is just, this is, I think, a bad ordinance. If we can send it back to committee, I will certainly vote to send it back to committee. I want to hear what everyone else here has to say. And I just want to say one more thing, that this ordinance change is coming from the state, Housing and Livable Communities. The state has also failed to provide the funding for the MBTA train stations in West Newton and Auburndale. They have failed, year after year after year, after decade after decade. I don't know when we're going to get the funding for those train stations. So if the state wants us to change our retaining wall ordinance, they better, you know, find some money to provide the funding for our train stations in West Newton and Auburndale, because this is getting ridiculous.
Counselor Lucas, you're out of time. Would you like some more time? Counselor Lucas, you're out of time. Would you like some more time?
No, I do not. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucas. Next, I have Counselor Baker and then Counselor Wright. You want to clarify something? Let me go to Counselor Baker first. Counselor Baker?
Yeah. Can you hear me now? I'm just having trouble with the... First, I want to commend the Vice Chair for his summary and report. I'm very grateful to him for stepping up here and doing the job he has done. Just a couple of pieces of background. The hearing reference is to our state zoning statute and not to what the MBTA is doing itself. We have to act on a matter within 90 days of a public hearing, or we have to rehear it again. That's, I think, what Attorney Lee is referring to in terms of the deadline. In terms of the substance, my understanding is that basically what the state has said is that they're willing to say that Newton is in compliance, but they want to make sure that the housing units in the BCOD can be built without a special permit, and we require parking in certain cases. And they want to make sure that that parking is not going to stand in the way of an as of right approval, and that's why they objected to the special permit. We got into extensive conversation in the committee. It started out with a 10-foot-high wall, I believe, and we said, look, that's just ridiculous. We've got to do better than that. And the compromise came to eight as a special permit and then to provide additional oversight to provide site plan review from the Planning and Development Board, which has the ability, as you see from the attachment to the committee report from the Law Department, the ability to impose conditions as well to try and mitigate the impact. So the sense that we came out of the committee was that this was the best we could do to try and respond to the state and preserve the city's compliance. We don't want to be in a situation where we're out of compliance, having done virtually everything else that we can to comply and get those ordinances done. I think many of you know this is not something I was enthusiastic about, but I think once we've done it, we ought to do it and finish it up and then move on to other things. So I will support the amendment as it came out of committee. I think it's the best we can do, and I hope the colleagues on the council will do so as well, and we can move on to other matters. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Oliver, did you have something in your role as presenter through as the Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure Counselor Lucas was basically correct with one kind of modification. I just want to make sure that people hear this. The state did not tell us we had to put the parking underground. That's not what they're saying. Like Counselor Baker just said, Chair Baker just said, what the state is coming back and saying is you can't require retaining walls to have over four feet to have a special permit. We're coming back as a city and saying, look, we're okay with retaining walls over four feet if they're underneath the building to facilitate parking. So that's just a slight difference. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I think I got that right. Yep. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, Counselor Oliver. Next, I have Counselor Wright, followed by Counselor Albright. Go ahead, Counselor Wright, please.
Thank you. I support retaining walls by right for underground parking. This is something we want to promote, but I do not support eight-foot or 10-foot above-ground retaining walls by right. Presently, we allow under-four-feet retaining walls by right. Many developers build right up to the maximum. For example, 20 Clinton and 47 Chase. These examples are a big issue for the neighbors and neighborhood. And then the developer will add a fence on top of it. Allowing eight- or 10-foot walls by right is ridiculous. This was allow 14- and 16-foot walls abutting the neighbors, which includes a six-foot fence. Many homes are less than 10 feet from the side property lines, and now they'll be looking at a huge wall out their kitchen window. How can herbs grow in the window if it doesn't get sunlight? Supposedly, this is for parking and loading docks only. We all know developers that will create the case that they need this for parking and at the same time flattening their lot. As Mr. Lamal from the Planning Department has said, the state only wants to maximize housing. I believe we need to consider the neighbors and neighborhood. This is who we represent. The Planning Board will review retaining walls over four feet. But what real teeth do they have? And on top of that, this is a mayor-appointed board with many housing advocates on it. Would they even push back? They still need to allow the project to go forward. I would not count on the safety net. We already zoned for over 8,300 units by right, and when developers subdivide the lots, that number goes higher. Subdivided lots are already happening in the first few projects. We did our job meeting the state's requirements and even more, and our city will see a big increase in housing, unlike Brookline and other towns that zoned on paper but won't see anything near their allotment, and they have even omitted that. I hope you will join me in pushing back on the state and vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Albright, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad that the Vice Chair clarified that the state is not requiring us to do retaining walls. They're not requiring us to do parking underground. They're just, we've said that retaining walls for parking underground, as Counsel Wright just said, they're perfectly legal and by right. The only issue is if you need to build a retaining wall to have the surface parking. So this is only a retaining wall for surface parking. That's the only reason that this retaining wall is allowed. And at first, the Planning Department came with us with two proposals. One was for site plan review if they built a retaining wall larger than four feet for surface parking. And another one was to allow it up to eight feet by right. And after that would be a special permit. So what we did is we took a belt-and-suspenders approach and put the two options together so that it requires both site plan review by the Planning Board and only up to eight feet. And we have, I know there are many who feel that site plan review doesn't have teeth, but from everything that Chair Baker said and others have said and the Planning Department said, the site plan review does have teeth. And as long as you don't make the project financially infeasible, they are allowed to put conditions. So they can review this project and see that if the developer is likely to put an eight-foot wall and a 10-foot fence, they can say, no, this is not the right way to do it. Try it this way. Try it that way. Do something else. So I think we should pass this. We've got this belt-and-suspenders approach and be done with the compliance issues for this particular phase of our work. So far, we have, I think, what was the number, 40? I think there are 46 units out of the 8,000 that we're gonna get supposedly. We've got 46 on the pathway, 43. So, you know, this is not producing the 8,000 units that we thought it might or that others thought it might. Let's get into compliance. Let's see how this goes. If it's not going well, we can always take it up and ask for a change, but let's get this done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Albright. Counselor Getz.
Okay. This is a place that I don't like being, only because I sort of think of this as we have a state, the HLC, telling us what to do with our zoning. But unfortunately, as we all know, the SJC just recently ruled in the Milton case, and they are saying that the MBTA Act is constitutional and that the Attorney General has the power to enforce it. So unfortunately, we are in this place. They required us to change the language, and we did that last fall, you know, in terms of the two conditions, the two provisions that we needed to change in our zoning. The next piece was the retaining wall issue. And I would suggest that we approved by right anywhere on a lot, up to four feet, a retaining wall. But then, it's four feet in terms of the four to eight feet is the section that we're looking at, because anything over eight feet requires a special permit. The four to eight feet in the BCOD is going to go through site plan review. And as has been mentioned by Counselor Albright, I actually took quite a bit of time looking at the site plan review. And we know that there are quite a few provisions within the BCOD for the site plan review. And the first piece that I was really impressed with was that there's a public hearing that's required. There is also a revue criteria that's established. And in that, landscape and topography is one of the criteria, is the avoidance of major topographical changes. Tree and soil removal shall be minimized, and any topographical changes shall be in keeping with the appearance of the neighborhood developed areas. And when they grant the permit, the site plan approval, they have to satisfy specific criteria. And in terms of the criteria, this is the one that I've just mentioned, but they're also able to impose reasonable conditions that would not ensure, the imposition of reasonable conditions would not ensure compliance to standards and revue criteria as applicable. So what this is saying to me is they have the ability, they have the authority to impose binding conditions. And that's where my hope is, that in fact, they would look at the four to eight required retaining walls specifically for the on-site parking and impose those binding conditions. We, as Counselor Albright is suggesting, we can watch and see. But unfortunately, in my perspective, we don't have a choice here. If we want to reach compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, we need to do this.
Thank you, Counselor Getz. Counselor Lobovitz, Counselor Crenzman. I don't see anyone else after that, so the two of you will have the last two words.
So I have just a question through the President.
Sure.
If somebody can answer it. Referring to the SJC ruling, I thought that they found the law itself constitutional, but there was some question about the implementation and the regulations. So I wondered whether that ruling, that part of the ruling, has any effect on this issue.
So I can answer that for you, Counselor Lobovitz. The SJC issued a three-part ruling, as I think most of all of you, not all of you are aware. One, it upheld the constitutionality of the law. Two, it upheld the Attorney General's inherent authority to enforce the law. And three, it struck down the guidelines on the concept that they had not been properly promulgated. There are legal procedures for creating regulations. The court found that those legal procedures were not followed. The governor in turn has issued emergency regulations, which essentially are restatements of the guidelines. The governor has taken the position that those emergency regulations are valid, that there's an emergency and she has the power to do that. They only are in effect for a limited period of time. Whether that gets challenged or not, I think is an open question, because one could argue, I don't want to get into legalities, but one could argue that this is not an emergency or the governor overstepped her authority. Again, I'm not suggesting that she did or didn't, but certainly that argument has been heard out there. But I think, again, trying to answer the question, we do have to comply, whether it's the current guidelines, which are now in effect through emergency regulation, or future regulations. We do have to comply, and we did last term pass an ordinance that is in compliance except for two things, one of which we've dealt with already. So I hope that answers the question, Counselor Lobovitz. Counselor Crenzman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this in committee for a while. I want to make two points. Well, whatever. There are a couple of things that this.
Two would be appreciated, Counselor Crenzman. Go ahead.
I'll make two, to be followed by three points after that. There are a couple of things that we agree on in this council, I think unanimously, okay? One is that we've seen some really problematic retaining walls, and we wanted to have more control over the retaining walls that are built in this community or not built in this community. And so we spent a lot of time crafting zoning ordinances to deal with retaining walls. The other thing I think we agree on is that we don't want future developments to overwhelm the city with traffic. We differ on our approaches to that, but I think we agree on those principles, that we're trying to prevent too much traffic from harming the residents of this city. What was made clear, I think, in the Chair's comments, Chair Baker's comments, was that the reason this is coming up is because in the MRT zone, we have a mandatory parking minimum. And that in order to comply with that, folks might need to build retaining walls. So the other solution, rather than getting too cute by the half and coming up with four-feet underground, six-feet, eight-feet retaining walls, was to eliminate the parking minimum in the MRT. Then, we can ensure that all retaining walls are still subject to special permit or all retaining walls over four feet. That's my preferred solution. It's much more straightforward. It gives us control over the thing we want control over, and it might avoid the thing we don't want to happen, which is too much traffic. So that is still my preferred solution. I didn't have support for that in the committee, which is terrific, including my esteemed colleague from Ward 1. But if there were support on this council, I just want to say that's another route that we could take. I'm not going to make that motion now, because I don't know if there's support, and I don't want to waste everybody's time. But I would certainly support that if there were support for this council.
Thank you, Counselor Crenzman. I know Counselor Baker, I wanted to be heard one more time. Go ahead, please, Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. Needless to say, I don't agree with Counselor Crenzman on his solution, but I applaud his eloquence. The other point I should make is that this is an item that takes not 16 votes, but a majority of those present in voting. So I hope the council will vote for this, and then we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Anyone else wish to speak on the item? Counselor Farrell. Would you use your mic, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just a question through you, please, Counselor Lucas. I'd like to know whether your concerns are swaged by what you've heard from the other councils this evening.
Counselor Lucas, there's been a question posed to you through the President. Go ahead and answer if you can, please.
So also another first being asked a question through the Chair. Have I been persuaded? Nope. I am gonna vote no. I'm gonna vote no. This is, I think, bad legislation, and the state's moving the goalposts, and I don't think I'm gonna have the last word. But yeah, I've already said my piece. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Grossman.
I just want to express that Counselor Crenzman's preferred solution is also my preferred solution. So if there are others where that's your preferred solution, if you want to say so, perhaps we could go in that direction now. I don't want to cause a hole to do if there's not that kind of support. But otherwise, at this moment, I'm inclined to vote no, because I like that solution.
I'm gonna, before I recognize Counselor Bixby and Counselor Danberg, if there is an inclination to have a different solution, I don't think that should be done on the floor of the council. Okay, so what we would do then is to remand it to committee for further action, just so we're very clear on that. So Counselor Bixby. And of course, a motion's always in order for whatever people want to do.
Thank you. This is my first time with procedures like this, but I just wanted to offer my support for this solution as well.
Thank you. Counselor Danberg, did you want to be heard on this? Counselor Danberg, did you want to be heard?
No, not at this point, because the question that I was gonna ask is, would we have to renotice this?
I think this would have to go back to committee.
It would have to go back.
Would have to go back to committee. It would have to be renoticed, because the proposal would be a rather different change. This is not like a technical amendment. You're talking through a different concept. I do think that'd be renoticed.
Okay, while I do understand the questions and the concerns, my preference is to get this voted out tonight so that we can move on. This is, it's not necessarily perfect legislation for us at this point, but I think it's only taking care of a single problem, and that is the issue of the need for underground parking, if parking is needed to make the minimums. And this would take care of it.
Thank you. Counselor Albright, then Baker, then Wright, and I'm hopeful we can conclude the discussion one way or the other.
I would just like to add that sending it back to committee would be useless because it had no, it didn't have enough support in committee. So I think we should get rid of this tonight, and if we want to discuss parking, we should have a separate docket item and have that discussion.
You can always put forth a separate docket item to do something. There's nothing that would prohibit us from further amending this down the road. There's nothing that would prohibit us from further amending this down the road if that's what the desire of folks is. Counsel Albright's right, although I'm confident that Counsel Krenzman went back, could, could exercise its persuasive powers. Counsel Baker, and then Wright, please.
Counsel Albright said it for me. Thank you very much.
Counsel Wright.
All right, thank you. With Counsel Krenzman's removing the parking minimum, I think there's a big issue because it's up to vote next November if we're going to remove the overnight parking ban, so it would just make our streets the parking lots instead of on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, we're going to have the clerk call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Krenzman, forgive me.
I just, I wasn't clear on the number, so I'd like to actually make a motion to substitute an elimination of parking minimums in the M R T for the item.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that motion would be in order because you'd have to have a new public hearing.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, you're not, you'd have to go back and have a new public hearing in order to entertain an amendment that's significant. So if you want to send it back.
Well, I'm, while I'm not sure that I agree, I'll instead make a motion to send it back to committee for the purpose of entertaining a removal.
All right, so there's a motion to send it back to committee. Do I have a second to that motion? All right, seconded by Counsel Grossman. We're going to do this in a roll call vote. I trust we don't have to have further debate on it, but I do want to have a roll call. So if it's a yes or an I vote, you're voting to send it back to committee. If it's a no vote, you're voting not to send it to committee and keeping it here. Go ahead, please.
Counsel Albright.
No.
Counsel Baker.
No.
Counsel Bixby.
Yes.
Counsel Block.
Could you come back to me?
You can have a moment, Counsel Block. Next, please.
Okay. Counsel Danberg.
No.
Hold on, my, my numbering. Counsel Downs. Counsel Farrell.
Yes.
Counsel Gentile.
Aye.
Counsel Getz.
No.
Counsel Greenberg.
Yes.
Counsel Grossman.
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey.
No.
Counsel Kalis.
Aye.
Counsel Kelly.
No.
Counsel Krenzman.
Aye.
Counsel Leary.
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff.
Aye.
Counsel Lovavitz.
Aye.
Counsel Lucas.
Oh.
Counsel Malachi.
No.
Counsel Mickley.
No.
Counsel Oliver.
No.
Counsel Wright.
No.
Counsel Block, why don't you go first, and then the President will vote? You got to vote one way or the other, Counsel Block.
Yes.
President Laredo.
No.
Motion fails. 12 nays, 11 yays, one absent.
All right, we're moving on, we're moving on to the main item. Remember, as Counsel Albright said, there's nothing to prevent anyone from docketing a future item at any time. Thank you for raising it. So we are going back to the main item. A yes or I vote is in favor of the main item, a no or a nay vote is against the main item.
Mr. President.
Yes. What was the vote again? It was 12, well, Madam Clerk, read it again, please, so I get it right.
12 nays, 11 yays, and one absent.
Okay, I thought I heard 12 yays, that's all. All right, thank you.
I understand.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you call the roll on the main item?
Counsel Albright.
Aye.
Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Bixby.
Aye.
Counsel Block.
No.
Counsel Danberg.
Aye.
Counsel Downs. Counsel Farrell.
No.
Counsel Gentile.
No.
Counsel Getz.
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg.
Aye.
Counsel Grossman.
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey.
Aye.
Counsel Kalis.
No.
Counsel Kelly.
No.
Counsel Krenzman.
Aye.
Counsel Leary.
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff.
Aye.
Counsel Lovavitz.
Aye.
Counsel Lucas.
No.
Counsel Malachi.
No.
Counsel Mickley.
No.
Counsel Oliver.
No.
Counsel Wright.
No.
President Laredo.
Aye.
Motion carries 13 yays, 10 nays, one absent.
All right, Counsel Albright, we may, we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned at 9:58 P. M. I want to thank all of you for a very thorough, deliberate, spirited discussion this evening, and we did good work. Thank you.